Okay, is it nine? It is 9:30. Okay, 9:35. So we will get started. Okay, and the script is, as a preliminary matter, this is a meeting of the Newbury Library Board of Trustees. I'm gonna call the roll of the members. When I call your name, please state that I am here, and the staff will do the same thing. So, Dick Raven.
Present.
Terry Licorice.
Present.
Alex Burke.
Present.
Dick Pasiri, yes, I am here, and Margaret Reno is missing. Jean Akely.
Present.
Erin Uman.
Present.
Okay. All right, now the script goes. This is an open meeting of the Newbury Library Board of Trustees. It's being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020.
Hi.
12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID-19. In order to mitigate the transmission of COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public meetings. And as such, the Governor's order suspends the requirement of open meeting. We want to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted with the agenda materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely, so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along operations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. This meeting of the Newbury Library Trustees is convened by video conference via Zoom, as posted on the agenda on the town's website. Please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and that attendees are participating by video conference. If anybody should join and want to make a comment at some point after discussions, they would be allowed to do so. All right, that having been said, agenda, approval of the minutes, which we don't have because Margaret isn't present at this time. We will skip over that and go to the director's report, Jean.
Okay. So, why don't we let Erin do statistics and also talk a little bit about the town report that just went out?
Okay, so this month's batch of statistics had a couple of anomalies. First, I'll say one of the things that was very, very popular on social media was our Indian cooking program. People really did seem to interact with it and pass it along, so that is good to know. But we're having an increase, a significant increase in our Facebook usage. And, you know, at first, it was only, you know, we tend to get a few new people every month, and it's been going up very consistently. But when I went into it, and this is gonna be really part of the next month's report, but halfway into March, we added 128 new followers to Facebook.
Erin, do you think that might have something to do with sharing it on the Kind of People of Newbury page?
Possibly. It let people know. I feel like we've shared on there before. I know I have. I shared one of our funny things on there, I think, before. Maybe it wasn't good. But yes, it could have, but 128 is
Yeah, that's a lot.
in a two-week period. So it's great. But however, our website doubled its new users that month as well. I have our website company looking into that because that's just not possible for us to have doubled how many people are coming to our site each month. So I have a feeling it's gonna be some kind of bot that's coming to our site and doing something. So they're looking into that right now. And next month, I should have a better idea of why this happened.
What kind of bot?
A bot like a robot type of automated thing that something is pinging our site. So we'll see. Hopefully, we'll find out more in the next couple of weeks on that. As for programming, our number of children's programs is significantly down, and we're hoping to add much more for May, when we hopefully can do some outdoor programming, weather-dependent. Because Zoom, Zoom programming is such a challenge, and it is a challenge for, it's not as much of a challenge for adult programming, maybe because adults aren't in school all day using Zoom. But it's still down, and we still have the same kind of struggles to get attendance for, for, for things that are a little bit different for our community. So our community seems to not have quite the same interest in the tech-focused programs or the job-focused programs. But they were really interested in Ted Reinstein and Indian cooking. So, you know, we're still just throwing things up, and we see what works, throw it on well, and if it does, continue. And if it doesn't, you know, revise and see what we can do. The annual report, I forwarded to you as well. And in doing the annual report, it was interesting because I kind of, I think Jean maybe was like, oh, God, what's it gonna look like this year? But it's about half the year, a little more than half the year before COVID hit, and then you see the change after COVID hit. And it's actually a pretty good annual report, I thought, all things considered. We did a lot. We did a lot before. We had a lot of success. The best harvest ever, for instance. And then afterwards, you know, it showed how we really got ourselves together and, and all of the ways, I hate to use this word, and I want to find another word, pivoted to continue serving our community and reaching out to our community and working with, you know, different parts, like working with COLA, like when Jane helped them in reaching out to seniors, and there were just a lot of ways that we had successes over the year. So I thought it was a good, it was a good annual report, and I thought it reflected well on, on the library.
Especially considering we only had one week to do it.
Yeah, there was that.
We were notified that it was due in a week.
Yeah, so if you have any questions, I can, I can try to answer them.
It does clearly show that we were going in a different direction before the pandemic hit, and we don't have the direction that we've been building towards, that you've been building towards over the past four, five years.
Yeah.
Starting to see the benefits of all of that effort, and, okay, it's a good foundation. And once this thing lifts again, we're able to get back into the normal offering of services.
And well, and offer, you know, get back to normal offerings, but not forget all that we've learned, because we have learned how to maybe offer to populations that weren't able to, we weren't able to reach prior to COVID.
You know, that's, we're finding things that we're, we're going to webinars and presentations from all over the place, and things that I wouldn't drive to, but it's probably just the Irish immigration. We talked about the Indian cooking. We did one on Jewish cooking. I'm not a big fan of tongue, but that's, you know, it was fascinating. I mean, isn't there one tomorrow at the library, something on cooking tomorrow?
Tomorrow is indoor seed starting.
Indoor seed starting, okay.
Which has been very popular.
Yeah.
So, no, those kinds of things, it's, I think, yeah, we have learned from this, and there's things that we can continue to offer in this. All right, I digress, as you may want.
But I'm curious, taking the Indian cooking thing as an example, do you have any sense that it spread out beyond our local community to places elsewhere in the country or the world, that people found out about it and watched it?
Not so much for that, for that one, I don't think. Most of the people in there, we knew, but
Although that takes the rounds with several other libraries and
Yeah, she did do a couple of other, which is what we're finding, like the, as I mentioned in the director's report, the man that did the, was doing the interview workshop the other night, he's been doing stuff all over the place, including BPL. And I actually, for his second workshop, for the first time, I put it out to the email list that basically is all libraries in the state. It's called All Regions. Just because I figured there may be people that had taken one of his workshops at another library and really wanted to take the second one. And sure enough, registrations have, you know, really picked up since I did that. It's a double-edged sword, though. You know, you, it's great to be open up to other libraries and have people from, you know, Carlisle attending one of our events, but we don't want to lose that sense of, you know, our patrons and making sure we cater to them in that sense that when people attend a program, even if it is virtual, they're attending with their own community members. So Erin and I kind of, we realize the need to do it, but we both, it also kind of makes us feel a little icky.
So we still want to figure out what works for the people in Newbury.
Yeah, I mean, that's been our mission.
It does become a very, being one who utilizes other libraries for exactly this, it does become rather narrow in terms of what your focus. By way of example, we did one the other night through the Hingham, the Hingham Library that was on the Four Rivers Shipyard. And that gave people from all over the country attending, and it was fascinating. So it depends on the topic and the subject.
Yeah.
I think it'd be a pure, a wide base. It is a local topic, obviously. It's something that, you know, more specific to the local community, but I think broadening the base doesn't hurt over the long term.
Right.
Yes.
And there's two approaches to it. So where we don't have an enormous amount of funding for programs, if we use our funding for the things that are maybe more local, but share to the community events, virtual events that are happening at maybe some of the other bigger libraries, so that you are still kind of getting new and interesting ideas above and beyond the local, but maybe we're not having to pay for it.
Yeah, especially like the BPL that does such, you know, some really stellar programs.
Yeah.
And Dyke Hendrickson, who's, he reached out to me, and we're, you know, he's gonna speak on the Merrimack River in his new book. But yeah, yesterday I saw he's basically at every library in the Northeast.
I saw that too. I'm like, oh, God. Was it Tinsborough that sent out the All Regions?
Yes, yes. But we've got plenty registered for ours, so.
Yeah.
One of the articles that Dick had forwarded to us from the Library Commission talked about programs that were being done for older people who couldn't leave home on a regular basis for socialization.
That's right.
I, some of them sounded really pretty good. Like, they, they did trivia. They did it consistently every week. And they did other things like Name That Tune. I don't, it takes manpower to be there to organize it, but it kept people in touch with each other.
Yeah. Yeah, I've hesitated to go that route because I keep hearing from COA that they just have so many people that don't have computers and technology, which is why I think the project that Theater Workshop is taking on with the vignettes on people's lawns is gonna be wonderful. And the phone tree, I think I mentioned that, the, she's trying, she's trying to get tweens, I guess tweens, but upper elementary kids to do phone trees with seniors who don't have computers, don't get emails, don't even have smartphones.
My husband.
Okay.
So that's it for me.
Okay. All right, Jean.
Okay, so first, we have the budget. This budget is as of the end of February, so 2/28. Not a whole lot has changed. We're 69% of the year. We spend 63% in salaries, 63% in library materials, and 56% of our total budget that we are responsible for. Pretty much everything's straightforward and not, not a big, a lot of big changes because I haven't started spending for materials out of the funds yet. So once that happens, you'll see some of those numbers jumping around. So I've got $18,392 left in the municipal fund for materials, and once that is spent, which I think will be soon because Katie's got a whole bunch of enormous boxes out there, then I'll switch over to state aid, the other funds, and gift and donation. Any questions?
I don't have a question. I just wanted to say, another thing that I did participate in, watch, was the space organization in the library presentation, and they had a PDF of their, that they've put together, which they now have in principal form, and I ordered two of them so that we'd have them at the library for us all to look at. Okay?
Excellent. And I don't know if trustees are getting all the same emails as, as we are, but it looks like some of the CARES Act stuff is, you know, not just the stuff that I'm using, like for virtual programming, but that there's money that's gonna be there for rebuilding, renovations, all of that stuff. I've only just skimmed it. Dick, I see you nodding, so are you getting those?
Yeah, I have seen. I haven't read it in great detail, because, again, it's still early in the process. They haven't calculated the other, actually, they didn't distribute this money. But I think state had indicated, from the state, had indicated that they would keep this informed as this stuff developed. There's something to keep an eye on. There's a number of things that we've talked about. We've talked about doing the sustainability things. We've talked about putting the cameras in place. You know, we can go off the deep end, or at least I can, in terms of the need for additional space for storage and so forth. So, yeah, I think we'll keep an eye on that and talk about how they formulate how they're gonna distribute these. It's still early in the game, so.
Yeah, and I think they're really hoping to get most of it to underserved areas, so.
That was gonna be
as it should be.
That was, that was seen to be a priority.
Yeah. Okay, so I guess I'll move on to the director's report. For facilities, Catherine DeLea will be in touch in April about painting the community room and getting the hanging system up. She will have received her second shot by then, as will some of us, so we'll be good to go. The blood drive is March 27th, which is a week from tomorrow. Again, we're not really managing any of that. My understanding is that they are just probably use the community room to, to sign in, and then all the, the blood drawing and everything else will be in mobile buses. I think they're having two mobile buses in the parking lot. So we're, I've got a sign up that they sent me, but we're not really advertising it. That's, that's really on them. And the Board of Health has been involved all the way through.
My question.
Yeah, yeah. And the Board of Health will be involved when Catherine comes in. We're not going to do anything in there without their approval.
Sounds good.
Which includes Theater Workshop. So for programming for adults, virtual program continues to be frustrating in terms of attendance. I did have to cancel two programs, and it's interesting, Erin, because on the statistics, the job searching got a whole bunch of likes, and that's partly because it was shared on other pages. But I also did a little Facebook ad, so that could attribute to some of that too, but nobody came, so I had to cancel it. So everybody shared it all over the place, but nobody came.
Right, and it was interesting.
Yeah. For last night's program, which I said, four people registered and none showed up, which is very frustrating. So now I'm getting more registrants, and the gentleman doing it was, was very patient and was lovely. But I'm getting all these registrations for the second session, so I'm going to email people that morning and say, you know, please, if you don't think you're going to be able to attend, please cancel your registration so that we're not sitting there staring, staring at the screen, waiting for somebody to show up. It's a rather awkward feeling. We have plenty of registrations for indoor seed starting. I think we're up about 20, and as I said, Dyke Hendrickson's program on the Merrimack. And as I said, people looking for employment is a limited number of people, so it stands to reason we're not gonna get the same kind of engagement. Erin and Katie are collaborating on a really cool historical outdoor escape room that should be amazing and a great way to get folks to the library this summer. We're shooting for June, is it, Erin?
Yes, ask me, I'd if I jump in on this one really quick, because I wanted to ask you. We're looking for a map that could be blown up, like, to the point of 10 feet wide and printed like a outdoor, you know, what's the, with grommets, like a thing we could hang on the side of the building. That is a map of Newbury from the 16 or 1700s. So throwing it out there, we may try to draw our own, but, you know, based off of the smaller ones we've found. But everything was so low resolution, we didn't think we would be able to blow anything up like that. So I thought I'd throw that in your brain.
The town clerk, Leslie, had a photoreal one of Old Newbury. That's like 18 inches by 20, maybe?
Oh.
It goes that far back?
I'm not sure. I don't remember. Um, I know I have one here, but I don't want to go look for it right now. But I have one.
We have time, but it would be used for, it's a, it's a escape room, scavenger hunt, local history thing that we're kind of doing, which is coming along really, really well, and KDD is, it's a very complex project in order to link these local history factoids with puzzles that connect you to the next puzzle, and everything is timed. So it takes about five minutes to solve each puzzle, and, you know, you wind up saving this witch that lived in Newbury from the, from the 1600s, or accused, accused of being a witch. So it's, it's a very fun thing, but it's very complex. But we, we needed the map to hang on the side of the building to do one, one or more of the puzzles.
Have you looked at the pamphlet, which the Historical Commission has published?
A pamphlet? We looked online and found many maps. They were just all too low resolution.
We had those pamphlets ready to go, and now that we've cleaned out that lobby, I have to figure out, I don't know how many we had left before COVID.
Are these the books, the little booklets?
Pamphlets.
Pamphlets, yeah.
Historical sites of Old Newbury.
Right, I'll have to look for those.
Doesn't focus on the 16th, 17th, 18th, whatever you're looking for. You have looked through Courier.
I looked through, I don't think it was Courier. Where, let me go see where it was that I looked. Oh, it doesn't say where they're from.
Did you find a map you liked, except for the resolution?
We did. We found a couple. Just trying to remember if I can find the link. Oh, the Digital Commonwealth. That's where we went.
Yeah.
We found a couple, and we can try, because back then, there wasn't, the, the map can be rather simple because there wasn't so much in Newbury at the time. We're really looking for like the bridge area and things like that, so. We did find the bridge going to, we needed one bridge, and I guess in the 1680s, there only was one bridge. So I think it was the one going from, was it the one just past the Governor's Academy on Route 1 here?
Or Thorley's, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
So, because we were gonna work that in. It's not, it's, no, it's not a requirement at all. It would just be great if, I figured I'd throw it out there and pick your brain a little to see if you had, if anything came to mind.
I was just wondering whether you could contact the people that posted the map to see whether they had a higher-res version of it.
Yeah, and we
Or could make a higher-res version of it.
Right, right. Versus if we figured out a way to take the map and somehow project it on a wall, you know what I mean, and trace it or something. Because it is a really rudimentary, simple map from back then. It's not at all like, like it would be today.
I've got on my, one of my files, a map of, I think it's Newbury, Newbury Port, 1795. I can't remember the level of detail in it. I will, I could check that now, just break away from this and come back.
Oh, that's okay. No rush, no rush. After is totally fine.
I'll find it and ship it to you.
Great.
Great, thank you.
So anyway, Courier's, two volumes, Old Newbury. There are maps there. Courier's History of Newbury. Again, Dick's point about the resolution. Don't know how either one of them would fit. Coffin also has maps. But although we've, we've got some really good repros of Courier's History of Newbury done, time of the 300th, 350th, 1985.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll make an inquiry over to the museum. Once we get through those steps, to see if there's anything there. I mean, there's a fabulous map of Newbury Port in the mid 19th, but that's not gonna be a lot of help to you. It's gonna be any help to you. Because you're apparently looking toward Elizabeth Morris and such things, but
Yes.
Yes. She's the star of the show.
And do, do, do be careful as to where you have her residing. Courier is quite precise in correcting, if you will.
Yeah.
Prior, prior locations for the woman. She was, she lived down on the corner of what is now Middle and Market Square. There's a plaque right outside the jewelry store. Yeah, well, you can see that. Just walk downstairs. One of your evening excursions.
Those are about to come to a close.
You might want to talk to Sarah Ryan, Sally.
Over at Newbury Port?
No, Sally, our volunteer, you know, who worked
Oh, yeah.
One of her ancestors was accused of being a witch, and she's been looking into all of that. Definitely, talk to her.
Absolutely.
You brought it up to the right crowd, Erin.
I did. Sorry, I hijacked the meeting, but, so, okay.
Why, we're here.
More fun than talking about the M A R.
Right on, Dick.
I don't know what you're talking about. What's that again?
Have you got your signatures yet?
Yeah.
Good.
Yay.
Thank you so much, by the way. You know, you were so helpful, all of you. But Terry especially, yeah. I ended up, I ended up going to the dump. Well, I was dumping my stuff off. It was a lovely day. It was warm. I figured out I could put it on my car hood and, you know, keep a distance.
That would get stung, man.
I'll set for that.
Good.
Okay, shall I pick up where I left off? No apology necessary. Well, so with town approval, Theater Workshop will be using the library grounds for rehearsals beginning around April 12th. You know, April is always a question mark in terms of weather, but that's what they're hoping for. They'll be there Mondays and Thursdays from 4:00 to 6:00, I think. So, I did reach out to the baseball league. I have not heard back. I'm not even certain they have a spring schedule, so we'll see what happens there.
They did last year, surprisingly.
They did?
Yeah.
But they had a schedule, or were they just sort of over there?
They were still playing, yeah. Because I remember seeing them and being like, wow, that's happening.
Yeah. All right, so Programs Youth, yes, Katie's, New Around the World is to Japan. I hope everybody got a chance to watch. I thoroughly enjoyed it, although I'm terrible at origami. I don't even try anymore. And Take and Make Crafts continue to be popular, and people are registering now to do them together on Zoom. So, as Erin said, both Katie and I are going to revamp our programming in May in hopes that we can do as much of it as possible outdoors and really get things rolling again, because we're the first to admit we've been in a bit of a COVID slump. So, we're gonna, we're gonna start anew with spring. Let's see. Oh, yes. Staff, Jean, as was to be expected, received all kinds of gifts and flowers from patrons. They're still telling us at the doors how much they miss her, but we did have a fun send-off with her on the 65-degree day. It was my first time at a restaurant in over a year. I wasn't in the restaurant, I was outside, so that was nice. We sat outside at sea level, and Caitlin White came, and we had a lot of laughs. We are wrapping up in-person interviews this week. We have two this afternoon, one at 12:00 and one at noon, distanced and masked. One of our candidates did have to drop out for health reasons, so we're now down to four, I guess, yes, four. And we should have a new hire selected by next week. I was hopeful we'd have somebody for this meeting, but that wasn't meant to be. And we really do have some great candidates. As soon as this position is filled, we will need to start advertising and interviewing for Marcia's position. I do hope to get to South Carolina in early May, and I'd like to get that position hired before I leave, although whether I go in May is completely up in the air. But Marcia does work until the end of May. And I think I mentioned in the last meeting that she will be back to volunteer with her son Ben, so we're thrilled, because she can help out with some cataloging, and Ben can help out with some shelving, and it's a win-win all around. Friends and Volunteers, still no volunteers in the library, though we weep every week that we don't have them. Tammy Carter is like at the door, knocking, so eager to get in here, help us organize this place. The Friends met on March 3rd. I was out, Erin attended. They are getting organized for the plant sale in May, which hopefully will be at the library, and that will be the last Saturday. We are open before summer, and Erin is working with the Friends to revamp their website. And I think that's it. Unless there are questions.
I just clarify, it's more getting rid of the Friends' individual website and bringing them under ours, so that it's more unified and presentable.
Hi, Margaret.
Hello. Hi.
Hi, Erin.
All right, next on the agenda is, well, the hiring process. Is there anything more to say on that, Jean?
Probably not. I will say that the candidate that dropped out, we really liked, but we had concerns about whether she, it was enough job for her, and she was the only candidate that did ask about the salary if it was negotiable. So, in a way, it's kind of a relief, because I probably would have had to go to the town and ask for more money for that position, which would be particularly troublesome right now. So, everybody else, nobody else has asked that question, although I suppose they still could. Yeah, so that's all about that, and that's, I think, the Library Associate, Marcia's position will be at the same salary level, seeing as, as far as I know, we are level funded for next year.
So, you would plan to advertise for Marcia's position in April?
Yes. Which is right around the corner.
Yeah, yeah. So, you would envision getting that process, the interview process, started before Marcia actually leaves?
Probably not the interview process, but just the posting and the, oh, yes, I'm sorry. I thought your question was different. Yes, we want to get that position hired before Marcia leaves.
Makes sense.
Yeah. I think I've touched on any of the others. I did, we could speak just a little bit about reopening. We don't, the town has not given us a date, and from what Dick Pasere has gleaned, it's not looking all that likely that it will be April 1st, which is okay, especially considering we don't have anybody in our circulation position yet. But the one thing I did want to mention, next week, we're going to meet with the staff that we have, excuse me, and put our brains once again on reopening. But the one thing that Erin and I feel pretty strongly about, and I don't think we're going to get any pushback from staff, is that we probably, and again, unless the town tells us, we should, we're not planning to open with appointments. We're planning to just open the doors. We may have to keep doing curbside for people that don't want to come in the building, but after gauging what other libraries have done, ones that have been open the whole time, ones that have been closed the whole time, ones that opened briefly and have altered their process along the way, there are very few that are still using appointments now.
For the computers.
Except for the computers.
But it's very unlikely we're going to reach our maximum limits.
Right. Nobody, everybody says we never reached our maximum limit, and it's just so much more work for staff to do the appointments, to schedule them, to check people in at the doors. So, this, you know, unless any of you feel differently, this is what we would really like to do, and I think it'll be easier on the staff, to be honest. Our biggest concern is children's. We may have to, you know, we don't want suddenly have five families in there. So, we'll have to have a way to sort of, if we look out our door and realize, oh my goodness, there's four families in there, to kind of close off children's. But this is something, like I said, that other libraries are doing. And I, again, I don't know, you know, the town is doing appointments only, so I don't know if they won't require us to do that, but I hope to have a conversation with Chief Lucy about it.
I mean, they're doing appointments now.
Right.
But I think if they go to opening up to the public, I think the appointment process would probably go away. That would be my guess, anyway.
Yeah.
Obviously, we have to coordinate with whatever the, maybe it's called, the Emergency Response Committee and the Board of Health. So, I think we have to coordinate everything with them, and that's a job hearing, is that all town facilities will open at the same time. It won't be sporadic. It'll be everything across the board will open, whenever that is, and I have no indications when that will be. Just kind of watching and, you know, following whatever the directives are coming from the state at this point, and as much as possible.
Right. We just want to have a plan ready, because as we've learned in the past, sometimes these things are sudden.
And I think you should, should be giving thought to that. I think we've had, you know, a year of this mixed bag, and you have a sense of what works and what doesn't, and, you know, start formulating, lay an outline anyway, and flesh it out as we go forward. I think, and again, open up to the public without appointments. I think it makes sense. More and more places are doing it, I know, and, you know, it's, you know, it's, we still have to take reasonable precautions, and hopefully they will.
And without children's, without any programs happening in the building, those are the kinds of events that would bring in large groups of people at once. So, without having those, and without having seating areas and things like that, it's unlikely, it's really unlikely that we're going to draw huge crowds.
I wouldn't think you would. I think people, to a certain degree, they're gun-shy to a certain.
If we, I mean, if we were having outdoor programming, we might want to limit, you know, we might have to kind of wing it a little bit on those days and times, but, you know.
Yeah.
It sounds like, you know, start putting the pieces in place, and, you know, whatever we can do, obviously, we're available to assist, so.
Thank you. Want to come help us weed the collection?
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't think we could allow volunteers in the building.
We can't, we can't.
Today's New York Times, which I read online, so I don't know if it's in the paper, paper, had a interesting Q and A with two doctors, and people asking questions, you know, I've been vaccinated, can I hug my grandkids? And it goes through a number of kinds of questions about things like this, like what's safe to do and what should we wait on. So, you might want to look at it, because they had some particular view change, I think, in terms of you, in terms of traveling, when to travel, when to feel comfortable to start traveling and stuff.
Right.
Let me know when that is, please.
As soon as you would like.
Yeah, I know.
Because, I mean, the issue is that those of us who are lucky enough to be vaccinated now may still, they don't know yet whether we can still get infected and get, you know, not have any effects from the disease and give it to someone else. So, that's the consideration. And I also feel, and I don't know how realistic this is, because I know that the particular vaccine that I got is, you know, has a, I got the Johnson and Johnson, so there's a a higher rate of infection possibility, though not in terms of dire effects. So, I just don't know, in terms of my own personal health, how careful I'm going to be.
Yeah.
Sorry about that. It's my wife's phone.
Just hang up on her.
I don't do that.
My daughter calling her mom. I don't hang up on those calls.
Is there anything else?
Not on my end. Next month, I hope we can actually do regular trustee business, like approving policies and things like that, but I think that every month, something always seems to get in the way.
Eventually, you'll be right.
I suppose so.
We can, I can read the minutes from February.
Right, yes.
How about that? There's some business for us to do that doesn't need to have to do with COVID.
That'll be the first and only thing that we vote on today.
Oh, good. So, Dick Raven, I'm sure your notes are pretty sparse, which is a good thing.
Yeah.
All right. The meeting was called to order via Zoom at 9:30 a.m. We were all there. I'll read it off. Dick, Margaret, Terry, Alex, Dick, Jean, and Erin. The Board voted unanimously to approve the minutes from the January 15th meeting. Jean presented her director's report, and Erin presented the monthly statistics report. Jean presented the budget update. The next meeting will be Friday, March 19th, at 9:30 a.m. via Zoom. The meeting adjourned at 10:53 a.m. There's a list of documents.
All right. Motion to, so, Dick, Dick has made it, Terry seconded it, motion made and seconded, all in favor of accepting the minutes. Unanimous. Okay. Thank you, Margaret. Perfect timing.
Good thing you showed up, yeah.
Now, do we want to pick a date for the next meeting?
Might as well.
Margaret, I think it's frozen.
Oh, she does look frozen. That hasn't happened in a while.
I had a lot of problems with my computer yesterday. I don't know why.
I did, too. I found my internet connection to be very slow yesterday.
Yeah.
Are you a Comcast person?
My mouse was like jumping on the screen, and then it stopped.
So, how does, April 16th or April 23rd?
I am out on the 23rd, so the 16th would be better, possible.
All right. How's the 16th for everybody?
Good.
Okay, for me.
So, let's say April 16th, at 9:30, that's working? Lost Margaret.
Yeah, well, we'll have to send her the new date.
Yeah. Okay. If nothing else, at 10:22, we can have a motion to adjourn. Okay? Anybody?
Me.
Sorry, you made the motion. Just going to second it. Dick seconded, Dick Raven seconded, all in favor? Okay. We have made a motion to adjourn.
Away we go.
And away we go.
10:21. I'll send this to Margaret.
Okay, thank you, Dick. Okay. Take care, Al. And everybody get your second shots, if you haven't, so.
Will do.
All right.
Take care.
Yep.
I know.